Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the order. We're going to have a workshop this evening with the Lepore County Council regarding Criminal Rule 26. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Judge Freeman, as I was saying.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you allowing us to be here for this workshop on Criminal Rule 26. We were here several months ago to begin to kind of acquaint you with the rule, but since then, we've continued our work. And the actual implementation is now about five weeks away. Additionally, Councilman Quinn is now here, and we wanted to make sure that we could answer any questions he has as well. So therefore, we wanted to have this workshop so we could try to kind of update you with what we've been doing since we were last here. What we thought we would do is, I'm going to introduce sort of who we have here. We do have a PowerPoint, but we plan to show that at the regular meeting unless you wanted to see it in addition now. I assume you probably just want to see it once, but if you want to see it two times, we have it. But I thought I would introduce who we have here and then kind of try to tell you a little bit about why, you know, how we envision this working. In February of 2018, a large group of about 40 stakeholders met in this room. And since that and from that, we've gotten a pretty dedicated small group of a working task force of individuals who've been meeting on pretty much a monthly basis. We have visited other pilot counties. We have reviewed our resources. We want you to understand that we're not doing a "let's shoot for this, ask for pie in the sky, hoping you'll give us this." What we tried to do was look at what we have and what potentially we can rearrange and rework so that we can best utilize the resources we have. And then, of course, we're going to explain why we need more. So what we think we've come up with is an efficient and affordable means of implementing the rule. We've worked hard with the major players to try to make sure we've covered all of the bases. We are still finalizing details, and we'll talk about that a little bit. We've also been assured by a lot of the pilot counties that whatever we ultimately do come up with, we are going to wind up tweaking as time goes by with growing pains and so forth. But what I'd like to do now is ask the task force members to stand, and I can introduce them or they can introduce themselves so that you know who they are and so who to direct questions to. Then I would like to essentially turn it over to our guests from Porter County. Sheriff Reynolds and his pretrial group are here to also answer some questions for you as to how their last year or so has been in terms of implementing. So if I could have everybody stand who's kind of been working on this. We've got Bart Stukes from the Prosecutor's Office, Magistrate Link. We have the prosecutor, Mr. Lake, Mr. Ira from the probation department. We have Carissa Strater and Ashley Wright from probation, and they will be doing pretrial services as well. Mr. Peck, Dan Peck from Swanson Center, I think everybody knows, Judge Thorne, and Chief Deputy Ron Heigl. Additionally, I know that Judge Stahlbrink was around there. Nope, not Judge Stahlbrink. But all of the judges will be, I think, trying to make it at some point today. So thank you all for being here. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Sheriff Reynolds. If you would not mind kind of explaining what you guys have done in the last year and then let the council ask you some questions.
Okay. First of all, thank you for asking me, or I'm thinking the sheriff, but I want to introduce, Amisha McDonald is, because you're going to ask me a lot of specific questions, and I probably won't be able to answer any of them, so that's why I brought the people that can answer them. And I have the head probation officer and the chief. So we have two probation officers and, or the head probation officer, and they understand what we're doing. So a couple of years ago, we were selected as a pilot county. We had an evidence-based decision. I was asked in no uncertain terms that I will attend these meetings in Indianapolis and not knowing really what they were about, but I went down there with a couple of judges and the head of our pact. I know you're looking at using a probation. We use pact. We don't have work release. We have community corrections. We have a really good relationship with our, really with all the stakeholders. I just commented to the sheriff, this is going to work really well for you because you have the right people here. Some of these counties, I think, in the state, they're all going to have to do this in January. They're way behind. They've got a lot of work to do. At least, I give you guys a lot of credit for, and the judges for having the, you know, looking at it in advance and figuring out what we have to do. And we'll be more than glad to assist in any way we can. So we were picked as the first, I think there were six or seven counties to do an IRAS, which is an Indiana Risk Assessment System. Did I know anything about that when they, when I, it took me a while to even remember what IRAS actually meant. But what it is, and Amisha can explain that, we, the whole premise behind this is to get people out of jail that really need to get out of jail, can't make bond, not, and she can explain the actual risk assessment that she does. And I know there's judges in the room. This whole system isn't to tell the judges, of course, what to do. It's just for, like a pre-sentence investigation. It's just, it's just information for the judge, and they just decide what they want if they're going to use it or not. But fortunately, I'm sure you're going to have this in Lepore County. They're going to go along with your probation. If your probation says that this guy should stay in, then he's going to probably stay in. He or she will probably stay in. But in our case, we have six judges and magistrates, and, you know, we've had a few judges that have been around for a while. We thought, I'm not sure if they're all going to go along with this, but they have, we have had any problems whatsoever. I mean, I can't even tell you one problem that we've had or any concern. And what we, we haven't really kept the numbers, but what I'm, what we're seeing is, most of these guys that get out, driving while suspended, you know, some minor violation that would have a bond, they're not coming back. They've got jobs, and there's every reason, there's every reason to get them out than keep them in. Now, the question you're going to ask me, but I'll ask myself and I'll tell you, is how does that affect our population? Well, this is my fourth term as sheriff. When I was sheriff the first time, we built the jail and the police department. When we moved in in 2002, we had 450 inmates. Okay? Today, I'm not really sure what it is today. It's probably hovering the last year or so, we've been right around 320 to about 340, 350. Kind of fluctuates but up and down. We've been as low as low of 300s, and we have 50 federal prisoners too. So think about it, our jail population is drastically, and we've seen it just drastically go down over the months in the last couple of years. Now, the one thing is, and I was telling the sheriff a few minutes ago, we just put a body scanner in, which you guys did before we did, but, so we wanted a body scanner because you guys had one. No, but it makes, but it makes perfect sense to have a body scanner. Okay? So, and I didn't want to go to the council and ask them for $175,000, $180,000 because they, they wouldn't have given it to me because they probably haven't. But we had $90,000 left over in our food bill, our money that was appropriated for our food because our jail population was so low. We put in the money for, you know, almost 400 inmates, but we haven't had 400 inmates, so we had extra money. So I, from a financial standpoint, that's a tremendous savings for us, and we still have the same money in our budget for next year, so don't tell the council that. So we know we probably have a little bit of extra money left over. And when we explained to the council that we're going to use the money to go back into the jail, to better secure our jail, they didn't have a problem with that at all. So, you know, I know you probably have some questions, but right now, we're, the first person we had doing IRAS was a former policeman out of Cleveland, and he just did a remarkable job for us. And then when he left, we, I said, oh my gosh, you know, you know, it was going so good, now we might have a problem. But we now have two full-time. We have Amisha, which I've known for probably 20 years, and she, she didn't miss a beat. I mean, she went right in there. That's right in her wheelhouse. She knows how to talk to these, the violators, and she, and she knows if she's getting the right answers or whatever. And we haven't seen any discernible difference with the, with the different, and now we have two. We have two people in there, one from probation, it's, or two from pact, and it's fine. It's been fine. So, so I mean, I think when you use probation, I don't think you're going to have any problem whatsoever. So, any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I got a comment. Councilman Rosenbaum. Mike Mullenhour. And Councilman Rosenbaum and I went down to, June, went down to a meeting, Indiana Association of Chiefs and Cities and Counties, and at that time, they didn't really report anything really significant on jail population being decreased. So I was kind of surprised that, and I'd heard that you had good luck over there. Do you, do you really know any idea why you had it and the others really?
That's a good question. Here's my opinion. I think a large part of it is what Amisha's doing with IRAS, and I think it's also a combination of the programs you have in your jail. And I also think that there's a system problem in some of these jails that are overcrowded. For example, in Porter County, you know, the only downside people might say is if you have all these programs and you're doing all this stuff, you're going to be perceived as soft on crime. Nobody in Porter County believes that we're soft on crime. Okay? But there's some counties that they're so obsessed with being tough on crime, they're missing the trees for their forest, I think, because they, when they arrest somebody in Porter County on a three or a four, they stay at a three or a four. They don't go down to a six. You understand what I'm saying? There's the six levels. And you, then, because we have, right now, we probably have 10 sixes in our jail, level sixes. There's a county just east of here with 100 inmates, and there's 50 of, and they're overcrowded, and 50 of them are sixes. Well, then, that problem is a system problem. You know, they have a system, they have a problem with their criminal justice system. You know, their sixes, our sixes, for the most part, are being reduced to misdemeanors, and there's not, there's nothing wrong with that. They get arrested again, and then they're going to be held accountable. Well, there's some counties, I think, in the state that they're not doing that because how come some of these counties have so many sixes? Lake County, for example, they take a lot of grief for a lot of different reasons, but they have hardly any sixes because I think the judges are doing the right thing over there. So I'm not saying it's the judges or the, but I'm saying it's probably partially, probably the prosecutors in a way. And I'm not even remotely suggesting that's happening here in Lepore County, but, but because there's a reason that, that people that are violent offenders that, when they could create, commit a crime in Porter County, they're, I mean, they, they, of course, get a bond unless there's murder, but, but they, they give appropriate bond so they don't really get out. And we have, believe me, we have a lot of people in our jail that, most of these guys, they belong in our jail. I mean, there's no question. Nobody argues that. And probation can give you a different perspective of that too, but, but that is a tremendous question because we addressed the overcrowded task force a couple of weeks ago with two Supreme Court justices, justices, and they're asking the same question. And I, and I said, you need to look at each county because you can't, what you asked, you know, Porter County might be different than DeKalb County or Vanderburgh County. Every county's got their own issues, and you need to look at, and some counties, they need to build a bigger jail. You know, it's as simple as that. You know, I mean, maybe their jail was built in the 60s or 70s, and it's just not big enough. They need a bigger, it's not anybody's fault. They just, populations increase, they just, they just need to build a bigger jail. And so there, I don't think there's any one reason, but I think the combination of what we, what we've done, and I think the, the one thing you have to understand in what I've saw in here is, the reason we've been successful is what you just, what you said. You've got this, you have the right stakeholders in the room. Okay? And you would think it's common sense. I think it's kind of common sense, but there's, there's some counties out here in our state, they don't have this, they don't have the stakeholders. I mean, at 5:30 on a Monday, you're going to come here, there's no way. But, but they get it, you know, and then, and I think in Porter County, we understand sometimes there's a reason for all these meetings we have, you know, but, but I think it's, it's working because we, we, we all get to, we all get, we all get along, you know, and, and understand the issues. So.
This may not be your, answer the question, might be for your staff, but do you spend any time with the three or four people that have three or four charges on them or people that are repeat, you know, the ones that we know are going to go in jail and stay in jail?
Do we assess them?
You follow the same assessment for a person coming in for felony three, felony four, a person that murders or whatever?
If it's a new arrest, yes.
Can you come to the microphone because nobody can hear you at home?
If it's a new arrest, we do. If it's just a probation violation, we do not. Because it has to be for an initial hearing.
Did you have to hire additional staff to start this off?
The first year, we used existing staff. And the second year, we hired a full-time, second full-time assessor.
And the first year, when was pilot program started? About a year ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago? Oh, that's right. Okay. So then, of course, you had help from the state with money, right? When they were, one of the, when they were a pilot program, they gave you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is how we got pretty much our second assessment.
So you started with your present staff, got them trained, then started, then you hired now additional people. How many additional people did you hire?
We, well, we only have a second full-time, and then we have staff who we've trained to do the assessments, and it's really our backup staff, but they have existing positions in our agency.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things here. Just, just for public knowledge in that, level six is the least because a lot of people don't know this. Okay? Level one would be your highest felony. Another quick question, what's your capacity over there at the Porter County Jail?
450.
450. Another thing in your intro, in your opinion, obviously, why would a judge, you think, have a reservation to do this? The power factor or?
Maybe I shouldn't speak on behalf of the judge.
Okay. Fair enough. And, okay.
I don't think.
Okay, well, I, no, I can get to that, but otherwise, I can summarize it real quick.
It's information to the judge, so it's up to the judge how they want to use that.
Microphone, sir, if you could, you speak into it.
Well, it's just information that we're providing the judge, so we're not telling the judge what to do.
Right.
It just gives them more information in order for them to make their decision.
Ultimately, it's coming back to them anyway?
It's definitely, it's all their decision.
Okay. My last thing, real quick, and you started to talk about this, like who, what qualifies somebody to apply for this position if they're not coming from, from within? Or, and even those, like you said, there was some training that are taking these spots. But what would qualify an individual to screen the arrestees, I guess?
So the only two departments that would be able to do their pretrial assessments would be someone from a probation department or community corrections who has the IRAS certification.
What is that, IRA?
IRAS.
Irish.
And the certifying body is the Indiana Office of Court Services.
Okay. And how many of those people do you have?
We have two full-time assessors and two backups.
And two backups, total?
Yes.
Doing everything?
Yes.
Just on the assessments?
Yes.
When you say backups, those part-time?
Meaning if I'm on vacation or in training, then there's somebody else.
So there's other people that are trained, but they're not necessarily doing that all the time?
They're in my jail every day.
Yes.
From about 7:30?
6:30 till, we usually are out of there by noon.
And where do they come from?
Where do they come from?
Where do they come from? If you only hired one person, where did the other ones?
Community corrections.
Oh, community corrections. Are you part of pact, are you part of?
IRA.
Yeah, are you part of probation?
No. We're community corrections. Community corrections and probation are two separate departments.
She is the head probation officer, so she, we work well with them. Okay.
So in our county, we pretty much, it's a collaborative effort, getting pretrial completed. We, they give us the space to be able to do the assessments. We come in every morning, complete the assessments, and share the information with the judges, prosecutor, public defender, probation department, and the probation department does the supervision of the pre-trials.
So that's a, is that seven days, Monday through Friday, you come out of days to do that?
Monday through Friday, yes. Five days.
Nobody does it at 3:00 in the afternoon, 5:00 at night? It's all, all in the morning time, right?
We can come back at any time.
If it's a heavy case.
If it's a request, yes.
But per se, you just do it on daylights?
We can come in 9:00 to 5:00, 8:00 to 4:00, anytime, Monday through Friday.
So far as it's working, though, you'd be able to do Monday through, seven days a week during, during the morning?
We could, yes. Yeah.
I got a question for the sheriff. Sheriff, did they give you, did you get an extra jailer too to start this program? Okay.
We did get one, an extra jailer, yes.
And he does transportation, basically? Is that what that, I mean, taking them, taking the?
So I can speak to that. So we actually, we did get a new jailer who is specifically assigned to work with our pretrial population. So this jailer, every morning, identifies the population so that when our assessors get to the jail, they know that who they're going to work with. And then that jailer is responsible for the movement of the inmates within the jail system and making sure that they also get back and forth to their initial hearings. He also facilitates doing the background investigations, so we get some collateral information on the criminal backgrounds of these individuals, so he also facilitates in that process.
Okay, thank you.
How long does it take usually to do one of these?
10, 15 minutes.
If 10, 15 minutes, how many do you average at Porter County?
There's some days, on a Monday, we can have 22.
Yeah. But do you have an average over the week or?
I don't count them, I just do them.
30 plus.
Probably 30 plus, per week.
Every, per week?
Per week.
For the whole week, okay. So 30 per week?
Right. Obviously, Monday's going to be heavier when you have more arrestees coming in from the weekend.
But you said you're doing Saturday and Sunday, though?
We're not doing Saturday and Sunday.
No.
Monday through Friday. And our assessors come in early in the morning. Part of that reason is because we hold initial hearings at various times through the day, and they have to be able to have all of the information prepared for the initial hearings for the various courts. So that's why it's important for our group that the assessors come in early in the morning.
So do you have the, do you have the same setup that's been proposed here where one judge is conducting all the arraignments?
Not at this time, actually. That is something that, that we're trying to move toward. Just like your judge spoke, we, we are tweaking our program as we move along, and that is something that we wish we had in place when we first started. One of the things that we're dealing with right now is trying to arrange that scheduling with the initial hearings, trying to make sure that each judge has their information at their time, and it's becoming a little problematic for us. So I believe the, the plan that's been developed for you guys probably is the ideal plan.
And did you add anybody in your prosecutor's office?
So I'm from the probation department. And we actually, through the course of our program, we've slowly been adding new pretrial supervision officers. So we are at three full-time probation officers that do pretrial supervision, and then we also have a supervisor over pretrial who does some supervision and then handles more of the administrative stuff as well.
I'd like to ask about public defenders. Are we also, do they also have to add public defenders as well? And how many?
So I can tell you, we started off with two part-time public defenders, and just this past budget cycle, our chief public defender has asked for an additional full-time public defender, just knowing that we're constantly growing.
So that would be one full-time plus two part-times?
Plus two part-time, correct.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Is there any other group that we missed that needed, that you needed to add personnel for in the county? Just, just to facilitate?
So that's, that's it. So we've drawn from those various entities, so the additional jailer, our community corrections that's had that growth, the probation department that's had growth, public defender that's had growth, our prosecutor's office has been generous in just using the prosecutors that would normally appear for their initial hearings anyway.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we don't miss anybody.
Sure.
Email, Sam, will you?
Yeah, I think we was. Yeah. Just a ballpark figure, I guess, then, in order to, for you guys, and I know you were on the pilot program or whatever, but, so what are you appropriating for maybe 2020 for this program to sustain and continue on?
Or is it all in different budgets?
It's all in different budgets. Yeah. Quickly trying to do some math in my head, but, but we do pull from a number of different budgets as well as we do get money from two separate grants.
Which, which other counties aren't going to get that, correct? Because there were some that were targeted, so to speak, to receive it.
Correct. Correct. Money that's coming to us from the Indiana Supreme Court has been targeted for the pilot counties. We do draw some grant money from the Indiana Department of Correction as well.
And you're going to get that pilot money again next year?
Well, we're hoping. There's never a guarantee when it comes to grant money, but, but we're hoping that it will continue.
For two years. For some years. So your Indiana grant, like you just mentioned, that's separate from the program itself. There was a grant that was available out there just to apply for, right?
Correct. You're talking about the grant from the Indiana Supreme Court?
Yep. No, you said, you had.
Not the pilot one, the other one.
Oh, right. So that's from the Department of Correction, so that actually is funneled to us through our community corrections department, so they apply for that grant, but they've earmarked some of that money to go toward the pretrial program.
So any counties eligible to do that?
All counties are eligible to apply for that.
I think we're up to over 300,000 are given for our programs, and some of it goes to you.
And that's not all for the pretrial program, that's?
No, that goes to the programs in the jail.
Right.
So how much, how much, how much of that is going to?
So in 2019, $56,000 came from the Indiana Department of Correction Grant. $153,000 came from the Supreme Court grant money, and then we had other monies that came from various funds from the various departments, like the probation department funds, the probation officers that are being used, things like that.
So are the council going to handle the issue with if the grants dry up?
Well, then we will be coming to our council the same way as your team is coming before you, asking for additional monies. Now, one of the things that the sheriff has conceded, and you probably won't see this much, the sheriff has conceded that he's saving money. So essentially, these are people that were taken out of the jail, so you're seeing a decrease in costs in the jail. So perhaps we could make the argument that since that money's not being used in that jail, then it can be used for the pretrial program.
But you know, as a council, you try to save money to give raises. You know, you don't save money to just.
I understand.
Bring back to the programs.
I understand.
And, and I guess the thing is too, is weighing out those, those costs or savings. And it's, as you look at, as Mark stated earlier, you look throughout the state, your county's the one that's showing the significant savings. The other ones aren't, so it's, you know, to base it on, we're going to save money. It's.
Well, I think it remains your scene, basically.
We're open, but.
Open, yeah.
Do you have an offer that, basically, when you first started?
Microphone.
That you, I'm going to say, totalized for the whole year that you needed to have to start this program?
The starting dollar amount? Unfortunately, I don't have that.
Okay. So they didn't just give you so much money for the whole year to see how it would work for that year?
Yeah, I think they did.
Well, so the Supreme Court did, we applied for grant money indicating what we thought was going to be needed, but we also did some shifting around of existing positions, so we just changed some responsibilities. So that's why there was, there was a smaller dollar amount given from the get-go, and then as the program continued to grow, then we've gone back and we've asked for additional money. we've gone back and we've asked for additional money. We've also made some shifts in our existing staff to try to accommodate those things, so that we're not overly burdening our county council. I mean, that's completely understandable. Um, but there's another dynamic that comes into this, which is public safety, and that's something that this program is doing, and it's important to keep that in mind for you as a council representing your constituents. So the public safety component is this, if somebody comes into your jail and posts the bond, that could be a person that's a very high-risk individual, that because they had financial means, they're back out in your community with absolutely no supervision. By doing this type of risk assessment, we have an individualized determination of who that person is, and what they may or may not do when they get back into your community, and we can provide supervision services accordingly. So that's something that didn't exist before. So that's important to keep in mind, that this isn't just switching around where the monies are going, you do have a public safety component that comes into play as well.
I don't think anybody will argue that, and of course, I, I think it's, you know, it's gonna benefit the sheriff, I'm sure, with the jail population, but the thing of it is, is when we're being asked to start this program and you, you know, just allocate a half a million dollars tonight to get this going, well, that's, that's a pretty rough one. When I read that on my agenda that I got in the mail, well, I thought, I guess maybe I was a little naive, I was kinda thinking that we may have to hire a couple people, but I was thinking more like what you did, of course, you're on the pilot program, I know, and you had some money, additional money from them, but to be able to utilize some of our present staff, get them trained, see how it goes, and then, if, if necessary, then do the hiring, but, uh, that's how I feel about it, so I don't know how the rest feel, but, uh...
That's what we did.
Yes.
It was this process, we didn't have a jail at the beginning, we didn't probation, we didn't know how that was gonna impact probation, but obviously, when you have more people out, it's gonna, it's gonna impact probation.
But it, it also helps when you're the pilot program, and it's not mandated at this date, you got time to?
Right.
Play with it a little bit more as far as, yeah.
Right, so, so I completely understand and respect where you're coming from. We, we were able to ease into it, and whereas other counties, it's, it's kind of being thrust upon them.
Yeah, cold turkey.
And we're not getting the funding.
No, so, no grants.
Sixty, each year, two years.
Yeah, possibly.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Right, thank you.
We do appreciate you coming over and talking with us, taking your time. And congratulations on your success.
Yes, thank you very much, Sheriff Reynolds and, and Yeshia and all of you for being here. Um, at this point in time, we thought, um, maybe it would be good to try and explain what we envision happening. Is that correct? Okay, kind of the process that we see, starting on a Monday morning, and how it will go. Who wants to do that?
So, we looked at our numbers, and we, after talking to Porter County, we realized they have five and a half people doing what we're asking for four people, uh, because they're doing the risk assessment through, through PACT, supervision through probation, that's five individuals, plus backup staff in PACT, as well as, uh, Doug, the supervisor. Um, our process, we envisioned to be, uh, five days a week, starting in the morning, seven or so, two people being hired for that position to go in and do risk assessments for all the people that have been picked up overnight. And we're looking not too dissimilar from, from Porter County, um, we're anywhere from six to fifteen a, a day, depending on the day, um, and those risk assessments would have to be performed, which is a fifteen-to-twenty minute process. But on top of that, we'll be doing background investigations within the department. We've, uh, applied to have, matter of fact, we have an IDAX terminal, an NCIC terminal that's been installed in our office. Ashley's been trained to coordinate that within our department, so we can do background reports without bothering 911, because we figured that's gonna really increase our requests. We, we currently ask 911 for background NCICs for pre-sentence investigations, but this will, you know, be a huge number. Um, plus, we'd be going through other online resources, looking for background investigations, background, uh, arrests within the state, and if we get a hit off of NCIC from out of state, we're gonna try to investigate that in other jurisdictions, um, to try to pull together the best picture we can of the individual, and get a report put together by eleven AM and submitted to the judge, to the prosecutor, public defender, um, so that they are aware of the whole situation. We're also gonna have one of our pre-trial staff in the jail arraignment room during the initial hearings, which should begin at one o'clock every day, um, to represent any issues that might come up with the pre-trial issues. Um, we also anticipated two people coming in later in the day to carry out through midnight, for people to get arrested before then, to try to mitigate that, try to share it a little bit, so we're trying to screen everybody that comes through the jail. Um, so, we would also anticipate, we, we were kinda patterning ourselves off to, off of Hamilton County, and they have pre-trial services officers that are on call on the weekends, so if they need to come in on the weekend and screen at those times, they would rotate through that on-call process. Uh, meanwhile, we'll have offenders coming in, I should say, um, yeah, offenders, coming in daily based on supervision, and I think, uh, Melanie talked about the supervision strategies based on risk, and we've developed a supervision strategy based on higher risk, obviously, is gonna be coming in a lot more often than a low risk. Uh, we have text reminders going out to all the people who are arrested in LaPorte County, or at least available for everybody. Um, that is the one proven evidence-based practice to reduce FTA's, fails to appear, uh, nationally as court reminders. People can opt out, or if they don't have a cell phone, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hit them either. Um, so that's kind of, in a nutshell, of what pre-trial should look like. And like I said, we patterned much after what Hamilton County has put in place, and that's just from the pre, from within the pre-trial division.
So the difference, just to clarify, between what LaPorte wants to do and what Porter County's doing, is they do it with one shift, and you're looking at maybe staggering them throughout the day?
Right.
And possibly on weekends?
Correct.
Steve, and, and coming up with that assessment of staggering, did you take, I don't know how much, how long of a period you look back at, 'cause you and I did a one-day look at who might be eligible?
Right.
And, and I kinda remember the numbers, it was five out of twelve that would have been eligible, just happened to be that day.
Right.
And, um, so I just don't know where, where you're coming up with the assessment, where you believe you, you should stagger this, rather than just everybody the next morning?
Well, because some people, there's still gonna be a cash bond available, so some of these people might bond out without any kind of supervision or screening. Now, the goal is to get them back in, so we can do a pre-trial risk assessment, an IRAS on them, once they're released, but if a person posts a cash bond and walks out the door, are they gonna come into pre-trial and get that assessment? Maybe, maybe they'll go, you know, disappear. We know how FTA's are when you're trying to get people back to court, but the goal of this is to mitigate that and reduce that, by...
So, let me just understand this a little bit better. So, if you've got somebody there doing the pre-trial screening from eight to five?
Right.
Six o'clock, somebody gets arrested?
Mm-hmm.
For a DUI? Well, not that, because sometimes they...
They'll be there for eight hours.
So, um, let's say they get charged with a, a level six felony, whatever it is, can they bond out right there, if the bond's already set at six o'clock in the evening? Is my question?
Correct.
In other words, somebody, and who, who sets the bond? Or is it just, you guys gotta, you gotta pull there, you flip through, and you go, say this?
Judges. There's a bond schedule set by the judges.
Compared to Hamilton County, isn't it kinda tough, because Hamilton County has a lot of money, and that, you're not looking at, you know, I'm sorry, if you compare LaPorte County, Hamilton County?
They have nicer bridges coming into town.
I'm sorry?
They have nicer bridges when you come into town.
They're a lot more nicer than that, Judge.
Yeah, they do.
So you're...
Undercarriage is an orange.
I know, we don't have a fruit market either, but they do.
With the judge's comment about, are we asking for too much? I think we're asking for too much, I'm off the bat. I think, if you're looking at this Monday through Friday days, get this program started, I, I think that's logical, but asking for the Cadillac right now is not the thing that I would think is appropriate. So, let me just revert back to Porter County. What are your peo, who, who does your screening at night, on weekends? Nobody?
No.
So what happens to those people? They bond out, you, they're gone, you don't catch them?
So that, that is a group?
You gotta come up there, I'm sorry. So that's a group that we are missing, and it's a major public safety concern? That group that's bonding out, we're not screening those people, so those people are bonding out?
So you're missing them, it's not that you don't allow them to bond out after hours?
They, they can, when you come into jail, almost every charge can bond out of our jail immediately. So yes, we're missing them, because we don't have the staffing in place for that, and that's something that we intend to...
I wanted to...
Understand. Is that really gonna be a benefit other than public safety? I agree, but it's not gonna save any money either.
You're probably correct.
They're out of jail, and there's where the big savings is gonna be, and...
And that's a public safety aspect, yeah, you're, yeah, you're correct, but, uh...
But it depends on who's bailing, bonding out.
Correct.
That's what you're trying to catch, is the one, Mark. So, if I get me right, this rule twenty-six was written for the people to get them out, they couldn't bond out. That was the purpose of it.
That's correct.
So it's not, has nothing to do with this other stuff we're throwing all out there on the wall, and say, this, those are sticks or not. If a person bonds out because he got out, and he hasn't come back and fa, filed his paperwork, that was not what rules, this is not what rule twenty-six before.
Right.
This rule twenty-six was to take care of the people that are supposed to be taken care of, and that's gonna happen. So if somebody bonds out, they bond out, that's not gonna change the system, and that's not the rule that wasn't written for that reason.
But if somebody can't afford bond in Porter County, they sit there overnight, till the next morning, till then somebody does the assessment, anywhere, and maybe they live.
But it's not months or weeks.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Let's, can maybe over a weekend?
Which is still quicker than we're doing it now.
Oh, yeah.
What's the timeframe now?
Well, we aren't doing pre-trial risk assessments.
But if somebody, if somebody, and I, I've heard this comment made, but if somebody comes, gets arrested?
Mm-hmm.
And they say, your bond's five hundred dollars, I'm throwing a figure out there, or four fifty, a smaller bond?
Right.
And, and the example was, Jeff can afford it, I can't, I sit in jail. How long do I sit in jail before a judge reviews that and tells me, hey, we're gonna either lower it, or we're gonna do something with that?
That varies court to court.
But, you see what I'm...
I think rule twenty-six envisions that this, that releases be based on risk, not based on wealth, okay? And to answer your question, it, it does vary from court to court, all right? And that's part of why having one judge handle these initial hearings provides some uniformity, okay? So that those initial decisions will be made by one judge. Now, that one judge will be able to contact the, the court that it will go to and get some input, i- if necessary. But right now, depending on the court and the situation, uh, that person could sit there for forty-eight hours, could sit there for ten days, could sit there for two weeks, um, before they're brought back to have another discussion, um, about bonding or public defenders, or what, what kinds of options there are.
So the plan is, is that everybody, I think you talked about one o'clock or something like that, there was gonna be, everybody's gonna go in front of the judge?
Yes, at one o'clock every day.
As a new arrestees?
Correct.
Would go in front of the judge?
All initial hearings will now, starting January first, be heard by magistrate Link, okay? And we do have a backup for when he's, for when he's obviously gone, but those initial hearings will then occur every single day at one o'clock, which is, I, I think what Porter County alluded to, it's a preferable system to having each individual court try to, try to set their own. So yes, that will occur every single day, and those people will have been assessed. So, again, the judge does not have to do this, it's a, it's an aide. Right now, we do not have anything like that.
So if someone's arrested at seven o'clock at night, and you do a pre-trial assessment, they still have to wait till the next day at one o'clock to get out?
They can bond out.
They can bond out, but they gotta be back in court the next day?
They do.
Is that, okay.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Mold, uh, where's the court thing to be used, utilized for Judge Link?
Judge Link is gonna use his, his magistrate court in Michigan City, but the video, it will be...
They'll use the video, right?
Correct, they'll use video so that people don't have to actually go there. Obviously, if you bond it up, you, you will go there, but we will use the video for the folks who are still in there, and that's where the public defender will be located. They'll be at the jail. And so the public defender, along with the prosecutor and the judge, will get this written report, eleven, eleven-thirty, every single day, and the public defender will then go to the jail, so that they can talk to their clients ahead of time and be prepared to argue release conditions.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, Sam? You have about ten more minutes, you got something?
Nope.
We have about ten minutes, um, 'cause I know we, you guys wanna have a little bit of a break before we start the meeting. Are there any other questions that we can answer beforehand that you can think of?
Anybody?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Nobody else wants to speak on the, uh, workshop? If not, we'll be recessed until six-thirty. Thank you.